Call the meeting to order now. Roll call.
This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member answering, present, Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Murray, we're glad to, he had shoulder surgery a week ago today, so we're glad you're doing well and glad you're with us this morning.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Selby.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Meeting agendas provided for your review and approval, of course, this is a special call meeting, so nothing can be added to it, and I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
Motion.
Motion of that effect.
Second.
Second.
Vote.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Is there anybody who wants to make a public comment this time? If not, we'll move on. New bus garage and football field house, construction documents, and advertise to receive bids.
Okay, so Justin's with us here from Sherman Carter Barnhart, I think he's going to go lead us through with the construction documents.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It should pop right back up, and there's no password on it.
Okay.
No, there's, just.
You said enter?
Yep.
I thought you were setting me up for.
Uppercase, lowercase.
So, I'll start with just some of the site documents here. At the back of the property, so you guys are familiar with the property there, behind Russell Springs Elementary, we'll be utilizing basically the right-hand drive if you're facing the front of Russell Springs Elementary, to basically extend it to the back of the property there and build the bus garage. You can see on the right-hand side, I'll zoom in a little bit so everyone can see a little bit better. So this is the bus garage building there that you see in kind of the tannish gray color. To the, to the south of that, the blue area will be an area of parking, and then the light gray area, and that's more meant for public parking and employees and that type of thing. The light gray area that you see to the north of that will all be bus parking. So, we've got enough bus parking there that can accommodate your entire fleet, so that's really good. One thing that Doug has also done, and you'll see in another drawing here, is he's also kind of gone ahead and graded the area south of the drive for future development. So if you guys decided that you want to build something else there in the future, you'll have that potential. But the idea there, he, the way he's grading the site, there's going to be some dirt that he needs to use anyway, so he's creating there a nice kind of level flat spot that can be utilized for, for the future. I'll skip on down to the architectural drawings for the bus garage. Unless anybody wants to review structural details or anything. So for the bus garage, let me zoom in there a little bit. So on the right-hand side there, you see mainly the office spaces at the bottom, in the bottom lower right-hand corner, there's a lounge and training room. A central access area just above that, that has two offices, just to, just to the plan north of that, and right to the, to the south, some toilet rooms, and then on the upper hand, the upper right-hand corner, you'll see mechanical electrical space and then storage space. Everything to the left of that is basically bus garage space. We have two full bays that you can pull all the way through, and then two additional bays that are, that are half-bays, basically where they can pull in and then they'll have to back, back out. And then on the very left-hand side, you'll see tire and fluid storage in the upper left-hand corner, and then a wash bay there on the lower left-hand corner. One thing I will mention as well, we also went ahead, right above the tire and fluid storage area, we also captured a mezzanine area that'll be utilized for some mechanical equipment, but that can also be utilized for some storage as well. So there will be some additional storage there. This is what the exterior of the bus garage will look like. If you look at the bottom... So this is the elevation that will face the highway, and you can see there on the right-hand side, that is the office area. We did add some signage there so you can identify pretty easily what the building is, but all of the bays, you can see all the garage doors there. The intent was, part of it, we're not air conditioning those spaces or anything like that, but we wanted to put those doors in the direction of the prevailing wind so that the breeze can kind of flow through there and just keep it comfortable for those working in the facility. So, any questions about the bus garage in particular? Okay.
I'll pull up.
Sounds like you've followed through pretty well.
Well, we've had a lot of input with the mechanics and Mr. Wolford with the design and functionality and all of that. It wasn't just sitting in a room and coming up with it, you know, we've had a lot of input with it, mechanics and stuff.
So similarly, this is the, the football field house package that you're looking at now. One of the things that you'll see there, at the due south of the track and the new football field, you'll see the home football field house, and then obviously on the opposite side of the field, the visitor's side, that's going to sit right behind the visitor's side bleachers. You'll also see some additional development there of the parking area that's shown there in the darker gray.
Could we have that parking maybe by this Friday? We've got our first home football game, that's not a scrimmage.
Think you can have it down by then?
I think it's going to be a challenge.
We'll need every spot in the world for that.
Yeah, I'm sure. But there you can see how those two new buildings will, will fit on the site. We did go back and forth a couple of times about the home side, the home field house location. We considered putting it closer to the parking area, but landed on the axis just south of the football field, but it is canted just a little bit because of the property line. So I'll walk through some of the... So this is the, the home side, or the home field house. So the second, the plan is at the top, and the second elevation there is actually the elevation that you would see from the football field. So we have some nice signage there and some logos on each side, just to kind of dress it up and just kind of incorporate some school colors and, and the logos there. This building will actually kind of fit into the hillside because of the way the grades work. So at the bottom, you can actually see the back elevation, the grade will actually hit it about halfway up the back, and we're using a concrete retaining wall that'll be kind of sitting into the hillside. So, but looking at the plan there, I'll zoom in on it a little bit. So on the left-hand side of the plan, you'll see a training room in the upper left-hand corner. In the bottom left-hand corner, there's a game review room that will be utilized for the team to, to look at film and that kind of thing. Just above that, there's uniform storage. Then to the right, you'll see a couple of coaches' offices, restrooms, and then on the right-hand side, just a large locker room space that can be utilized by the team with the showers immediately behind that area. So, then similarly, this is the visitor's side field house. It's set up very similar, obviously, because it'll be utilized for middle school, the middle school team as well. So on the right-hand side there, you see the locker room area, and then moving toward the left, you have a, a office area, restroom space that can be utilized by the teams, and then to the left of that, you actually see public restrooms that can be utilized by visiting fans, so they don't have to come all the way back around to the home side. And then on the left-hand side, a small concession stand for visiting teams as well. And then just below that, you can kind of see what those elevations and what the outside of the building will look like. On the, on the, where we, there we had the logo, that end kind of peaks out from behind the visitor's side grandstand, so we wanted to just dress up that corner just a little bit.
So that's, that faces the field?
Correct. Yep. Yep, and that, and that's the concession stand corner there.
And approximately how many feet there between the back of the bleachers and the start of that? I can't recall.
So it's probably about 20 feet.
So a good walkway, I'd say, from the back of the bleachers to, to that area.
Yep. Any questions about the football field house? So, so at this point, this is the last approval that we'll need from you guys. We'll be working with Branscombe, they'll need to put their bid packages together, they'll need a little bit of time for that, but we plan to get the project out to bid and get numbers back for you guys to review as soon as we can. So, any other questions?
Looks good.
All right.
Next week would be a good time.
Yeah, yeah.
So with today's action, is approval of the construction documents for submission to Kentucky Department of Education, and then authorizing Branscombe Construction to advertise and receive bids for the new bus garage and the football field houses.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Thank you all, thank you, Justin. Mr. Branscombe, any of you all have anything to say?
I think, Destin, Jonathan, we were all talking this morning, it'll take a couple weeks here.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Build these drawings and get bid packages ready, then we'll establish a bid date.
Yeah, sounds good.
Next item is consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, of course, we had a special call meeting in there as well, payment of bills, and I've noted to you all that we'll have the school activity fund reports on the next meeting, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly report, Ms. Carnes.
Treasurer's report for the month of July 2024, balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $12,326,123.44. Total receipts for the month were $3,991,878.64. Total receipts and beginning balance together is $16,318,028. Disbursements for the month were $2,616,510.47, and that brought our balance at the close of the month to $13,701,491.61. And our fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, $8,899,679.55. For special projects, Fund Two, $741,569.55. For district activity, Fund Twenty-One, negative $4,016.83. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, $133,398 even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, $690,180.35. Construction Fund, Fund Three Sixty, $2,547,109.81. Debt Service Fund, $400. Food Service Fund, $51, $691,443.48. Fiduciary Fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $2,127.70, and the total cash in bank was $13,701,491.61.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes. There are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
Second. Mr. Murray.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item is change orders, old area technology center renovation project.
So here's, well, four change orders in totality, just in the midst of, of the renovation, $1,700 to replace some of the outlets and switches that were not in the original scope of the, of the work, so the devices match some of the old stuff. Paint the new overhead door to match, $475. And then omit five stainless steel electric hand dryers to get a deduct. The original scope did not include the wiring to, to put the hand dryers in, just kind of a mix-up or oversight, I guess, and instead of doing that change order and doing that wiring now on the backside, I just recommended that we just forget those and we just put in the paper towel dispensers, that's in most of our schools anyway, and then the construction management fees regarding those change orders. Ms. Destin, do you have anything to add to those? Pretty cut and dry and nominal amounts. I recommend approval of the change orders as presented.
Motion.
Is it about, it seems like it's been a long time coming.
Equipment waiting to.
We're waiting on, yeah, switching here right now. We're waiting on switching here right now, it's been a long wait time out.
There, actually about, everything else as far as the major trades are in a holding pattern waiting for that, yeah.
Second.
Clear. Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is contracts, memorandum of agreements.
We've got two additional mental health services memorandums of agreement, one with Bluegrass Professional Counseling, and another for Brighter Future Therapy Center, something you all see a lot, and again, appreciate Mrs. Dameron facilitating those, and then we have our agreement with Casey County School District for the transportation of students from Casey County to the Kentucky School for the Deaf, and as a reminder, then they pay half of our driver and half of the aid of, that's on that bus and that transportation, which is, it helps out Casey County, it helps out us, we're going through Casey County anyway, so it's a, it's a win-win, and we've not had any significant issues. The only issues we've had is sometime on timing, maybe the bus isn't there to meet us on time, but Mr. Wolford works with them on that, and it's, it's nothing too significant, so I recommend. Off the top of my head, Ms. Joel, I think there's two right now.
And they have one in Casey County?
No, I think they have two as well. We may, I may bring to you all later, we may enter into an agreement with Adair County as well, and they come over here and meet us because they've let us know they have a student, and they know that we're going as well, but that's not finalized.
Do they run a normal-sized bus all the way to Danville?
The, yes, they do, yeah. And it's, it's, we don't have any extra handicap, and the small ones are not even any more efficient really than the other ones, but yeah, I almost certainly do, Mr. Selby. But it's, it's back in the regular fleet, so it goes over and then it runs its regular fleet sometimes as well with that.
Think of the four others?
Well, like, they've already started school now, and then the time, it just depends on how they work out of whether or not they're back, and that bus is used for other stuff, I mean, like, it may be used on a field trip or something sometimes. So I recommend approval of the contracts and/or memorandum of agreement that's been approved by the board attorney.
Make a motion of effect.
Second.
Second.
Vote.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is 2024-2025 tax rate. Purpose tax rate reduction for real estate with personal property tangible, motor vehicle, watercraft, and utility tax unchanged.
So KRS 160.470 requires local boards of education to set tax rates within 45 days of receipt of certified property assessments. Our current, and I'm sorry, that's a typo on that receiving date from, carried over from last year. Our current tax rate is 50.8 for real estate, 51.1 for personal property tangible, 52.2 for motor vehicle, watercraft, and 3% for utility tax rate. I'm proposing that we reduce the tax rate to 50.1 for real estate, and that personal property or tangible remain at 51.1, motor vehicle, watercraft tax remain at 52.2, and the current utility tax at 3% remained unchanged. This proposal does not require hearing, as, you know, sometimes in the past, we've, we've had to do a hearing, and it allows, Russell County Schools, we can still, it increases the revenue because the property evaluations, we all know, has went up so much, and we can reduce the tax rate, still generate that additional 4% revenue, and, and my, in my words, I guess, is a win-win as far as that. Also something I just want to mention, and I'll ask Ms. Carnes to chime in here too, with this action, it's the last action that's required during the, this past legislative session, the Kentucky General Assembly passed a, language was passed that helps school districts like us, that has had the large increases in property values and assessment growth. It's called the Property Assessment Growth Relief Language, list qualifications required for a school district to be eligible for that, and we meet the, we, we meet the four, so it's 24-25 qualification requirements, and we have to meet all four. Must qualify per KRS 157.360, which is the 4% adjusted growth seek in final 23-24, and we met that. Must qualify, again, in fiscal year '25 for 4% adjusted growth seek fiscal year '24-25. Districts will know after the 24 certified assessment is received, which that's done, and we've qualified for that. Excess of 14.4 growth in real property from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '25, and districts will know after the 24 certified assessment is received, and that's done, so we've qualified for that. The last part of this, and I know this is all confusing language, it is, isn't it? Is the last part for us to qualify for this money is that we generate the 4% or greater in, in tax revenue. So in real simple terms, the more local funds a district generates from property value, for instance, the less we receive in proportion from the state, that fair, easy way to say it, Ms. Carnes. So, because SEEK is not, SEEK is, SEEK is a lot about equalization, so on Eastern Kentucky, that may be a really, really poor property value, they're going to get more SEEK per pupil than Russell County, because we, our property's worth more. It's not a, a dollar per dollar student, a dollar per dollar. But what, what the legislature, and we appreciate this, has recognized that districts such as Russell County that's had these significant increases in property value that has generated additional local funds from the tax base, it's not a dollar, it's not a dollar per dollar offset from SEEK. So if we generate additional dollar in tax revenue, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to decrease it by just a dollar for SEEK. Ms. Carnes, you can chime in here anytime, because it is, it is very confusing and it's very convoluted, but it's not a dollar per dollar. Number one, the legislature expects you to generate local funds, we set tax rates, and they incentivize districts to do that. The nickel is, is a great example, the equalization, but in this, there's no other really way to say it, is that the more money you generate locally, the less money you get from the state, which I understand that, but it still doesn't proportionalize out, and the legislature have recognized this to where it's been, it's great that we have a lot of local dollars, but they're saying in excess SEEK dollars that the state may have left over, we're going to get a chunk of that because we realize that the SEEK is not kept up with what you're getting from property value. Now, Mr. Murray, can you restate every bit of that? That's, that's a mess.
One thing that we've got going for us, in my opinion, is there's more people moving in.
There is.
So, that's more money, or more revenue driven.
It is, yes, sir.
Of course, your property's going to go up.
Yep.
Even though the property that's already here, that people have lived here, may be the same, but I mean, just like, for instance, go to, go to Eli.
Go to Eli.
You know, they're, they're building everywhere.
Yes.
So that drives the, that drives the, the monies up as far as a property evaluation, so.
Which again, then, that's reflected in today's, you know, tax rate reduction.
Then it reduces that, but you keep your balance basically the same as what you had.
Well, they can still generate the, because, like you're saying, the property values have went up so much.
But you can go down on the, on, on the tax rate, because it's offset by the number of people and the, and the revenue that's being brought in with the tax rate.
So we will not know this, this, and this has nothing to do with the action item when I was going over, but we will not know how much money we will get for that until near the end, will we, Ms. Carnes, because the fiscal year has to nearly exhaust itself for the state to say, okay, we've got X amount of dollars left in the pot, and we're going to give it to these growth districts for that, to get, but we know if there's anything left, we'll get a piece of it to help offset, so. Yeah, yep. And just... And August the 12th, because I had, like I said, I had a typo on that, August the 12th is when we received our tax report, just this past week, and so. So I recommend the following tax rates of 50.1 for real estate and that personal property tangible remain at 51.1, motor vehicle, watercraft tax rates remain at 52.2, and the current utility tax rate at 3% remains unchanged. And of course, you all have all the tax reports that's listed there in your, in your board package with that. Ms. Carnes, do you have anything to add to that? You can't clean up my mess with what I say? It is, it is, it is confusing.
I make the motion.
You make the motion. Second. Second. Second.
Mr. Selby.
Vote.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item is amend school year 2024-2025 calendar schedule.
So at the December 2023, 2023 meeting of the Russell County Board of Education, the school year 24-25 calendar and schedule was approved. Since approved, the regional swim meet has been moved from February 7th and 8th, 2025, to January 24th and 25th of 2025. So, you know, you know, when we host that regional swim meet, basically every other year, that we take off, we close school on that Friday just because of the sheer amount of traffic, and we would have no parking or anything like that to accommodate the swim. So now that they have changed that schedule, the Kentucky High School Athletics Association, we need to recommend, or I recommend that we move that back and take off that Friday, January 24th, instead of February 7th. So January 24th will be the day that we're off, February 7th will be in school as an instructional day, and then it still meets all the required minutes and everything like that, and the proposed revision is attached for your review. So I recommend approval of the revised school year 24-25 school calendar and schedule with 170 instructional days and more than 1,062 hours.
I'll make that motion of that effect.
Mr. Murray.
Second.
Second, or second. Vote.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
We'll get that out to everybody to make sure that they're aware of the changes.
Next item is 2024-2025 school start and end times, no change.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No changes here, as Mr. Kazook just noted here on the school start and end times, 7:30 each morning for each of the schools, everybody will dismiss at 2:30, with the exception of Salem ending at, at 2:40, and that meets all the hours and the required days, and this is a procedural item that the board has to do every day, is the individual school set the bell schedule and the schedule within the, within the parameters that you all set, but you all set the start time and the official end time for each school. So I recommend approval of the 24-25 school year daily start and end times as presented.
Motion. Second. Second. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bethel?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is educational leave of absence.
So Mr. Jerry Flat, our current employment specialist, has requested unpaid educational leave of absence to complete his student teaching. I'm going to congratulate Mr. Flat. Effective August 21st, 2024, and assuming there's no weather closures or closures or other unforeseen school closings, he will, his leave will conclude on December 12th, 2024. So I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education grant Jerry Flat an educational leave of absence without pay effective August 21st to conclude December 12th, 2024.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Joy? Second. I'll say it. Second.
With our students in special education, he helps, it's funded through Office of Vocational Rehabilitation.
In high school.
And he works with getting those kid jobs. Yep, I'm sorry, who's second?
Mr. Murray.
Murray?
Mr. Murray, okay. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bethel?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Ms. Joy, that would be, I want to make a note, that would be a great presentation for you all sometime.
Uh huh. What? He has a Tomlin question proposed.
No, you don't have to. He is finishing his teacher's degree now.
That's right.
Yep.
Next item is out of state and/or overnight trips.
The following groups have submitted trip requests that include overnight travel. Lady Laker volleyball, August 23rd to 24th, Apollo High School in Owensboro, Kentucky for the Summer Slam Tournament. September 27th to 28th, KBC in Lexington, Kentucky for volleyball tournament. And the TSA Engineering Club, September 16th through 17th, the TSA Executive Meeting in Frankfurt, Kentucky. We have two students that are, that are state officers with Mrs. Ackerman's TSA club. So we're very proud of that, and then she's on the state board with it as well. So I recommend approval of out of state and overnight trips as presented.
Is there a motion? Ms. Joy? Second.
Second.
Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bethel?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is stipend for language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, L-E-T-R-S training.
Yep. I'll let Mrs. McFaul talk to you about this training. It's a great initiative and really proud of our teachers that have agreed to be part of it.
Letters, which is what the acronym stands for, is a comprehensive professional learning opportunity for our teachers and actually educators because we're instructional coaches, and we have a principal also involved in this, but it spans over two years. And right now, it is no cost, it's provided through the state, it's a no-cost professional learning opportunity, but it's very comprehensive. And it covers basically eight units that the teachers and the educators will work through, and it's four per year. And these units are basically topics on the essentials of literacy instruction, phonemic awareness, phonics, comprehension, those types of things. And each unit takes about six to eight weeks to go through, to work through. And these teachers are, you know, they basically say the expectancy is that you'll spend an hour a week at minimum doing asynchronous learning, and then you take that learning and you work with activities with the kids in your classroom. So as they work through these units, at the end, they have an assessment that they have to take, and you have to pass that assessment, and then you have a six-hour facilitator-led training that you do six hours on a Saturday, or you do two, three-hour sessions in the evening. So you can see, you know, teachers' plates are full, all ready. So them wanting to do this is phenomenal, like Mr. Ford said. We are some tickled that some have agreed and feel a sense of urgency to go through this because it's going to better them as educators and it's also going to better our students. And that's one of the things, and you know, we all know that a child's ability to read affects them, not only educationally, but in their lifelong success. And there was a study that went out in 2017 that said, you know, basically, we're losing ground in reading achievement. So specifically in 2019, they said that 50% of third graders in Kentucky were reading below proficiency. And we all know what happened after 2019. We had a two-year period of craziness. So not just in Kentucky, but across the nation, the reading scores continue to go down. So I look back at our 2022-23 KSA data, because we don't have the public reports for this school year, this last school year yet, but we have made some improvements, and third graders in our district were at 51% proficient or above, which has shown great gains, and that compared to 47% of students across the state of Kentucky. So it does show that our educators are working hard, we are taking this seriously. But again, when you think about 51%, that's not where we want to be. And they talk about compounding this issue is 49% of universities across the nation aren't really preparing the educators going out in the field for this specific literacy instruction. And when you talk to these teachers, they'll tell you that. I mean, student teaching is such a wonderful experience to go through, but sometimes those essentials, you know, just like any job that you go on, you don't learn the integrated until you get off the ground. And then they're struggling trying to pull these things and learn from other people. So that's why this two-year program is very essential, because it's giving them the skills that they need to take back to their students. And also, this is kind of driven by Read to Succeed Senate Bill 9, which basically has put a sense of urgency on kids reading across the state of Kentucky. So last year, districts were required to have a universal screener in place, which we have had for several years. That wasn't really an issue. But they also asked people to use a state-approved reading diagnostic. And that reading diagnostic was supposed to be given to all K3B students, which we did, but the whole point of that is to specifically diagnose what's the struggle? Why can't this kid read? Is it decoding? Is it phonemic awareness? Is it phonics? But the problem is too, once you have that, if you don't have educators that have the expertise in those areas, it's hard to help those kids continue to grow. So we're trying to get the things in place. We've got the universal screener, we've got the appropriate diagnostic that gives us the data that we need, and now we've got these wonderful educators that are willing to go into this two-year comprehensive program to learn how can we best up our kids. So, you know, all in all, it's a wonderful program, it's a wonderful opportunity for our kids, for our teachers, and for our district as a whole. So we do have right now a total of 17 people in the elementary setting, and it does include instructional coaches and administrators, which they will not be receiving the stipend, it's just the teachers. But across the gamut, we've got people who can network within their schools, across the district to work and improve. And another thing, just another bonus for our teachers are, BRIC is also providing an opportunity through BRIC Ed. So if they go through this program, they can also get a rank change. So instead of going back to, you know, Western University of Compton or whatever and trying to get like a principal's certification, which they can still do that because you have a Master's and a Rank One, but for these people, that's a great incentive to do the work that they need to be doing, they know they need to be doing, but then they're going to be rewarded too by doing this work and participating in BRIC Ed to get a rank change.
And they, they choose that on the front end.
Yes.
You know, if I'm going to get my rank changed, then I know that on the front end, then XYZ goes along with mine. And we have some that are going to do that.
We have four and probably a fifth that's going to go ahead and apply to that. So, you know, and people are in different places in their careers, and some don't need that, and some wish they had known about this earlier so that they could use that. But still, I think that shows you the motivation that these teachers have, that regardless if they get that, you know, rank change, or, you know, it's helping them and it's helping their students. So this is why that we are trying to propose a stipend for these folks, because it is definitely above and beyond for what they're doing day to day anyway, and it's going to benefit everybody.
And just builds such good capacity for our educators, and most importantly, for our students.
Right, through the, through the state or it's federal?
No, it's through the state.
Yes.
This is through the state, yes.
That's, it sounds wonderful.
Yeah. It's something that...
A lot of work, sounds like.
It is, it's, I mean, you have to be committed.
Yeah.
It would be great, Mrs. McFaul, as this progressed, that maybe we, a few of them would come and just present to us and just talk about what that looks like.
And I'm sure they would.
Yeah, and then you all can hear how they, more importantly, what's that changed instructional practices and things in the classroom, but it's, it's great.
So how many teachers would be receiving this stipend?
Thirteen.
Fourteen. What did she say?
How many? We have 17 people total, don't we?
Yes.
Thirteen of those are teachers. Three instructional coaches, no, one coach has already done it.
Yes. I counted fourteen.
Fourteen, okay, yes, that's right.
And the stipend comes from Title 13.
Yeah, that's what I was going to mention. Ms. Tanya is budgeted for that, for federal, so it doesn't count out of the general fund. She can do that out of her federal programs.
Good for you, Tanya.
Yeah.
It's important, we got to put those...
Well, it's something where they eat.
Yeah.
All right.
So I recommend approval of the $1,200 stipend for teachers participating in the language essentials for, language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, letters training.
I'll make the motion.
Motion. Is there a second? I'll say it. Second. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bethel?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is job description amendment, teacher, English is the second item.
There's been so many board meetings over the past really couple of years that we've talked about the need for our students that, that English is not their native language. And this is another board meeting that we're going to be talking about that as well. So I'll, Ms. Tanya, if you want to touch on the highlights of that?
Of course. Like you said, over the course of the last couple of years, I've spoken many times about our English learners and how our population has continued to increase. And if you recall, we went up 90 students in one year, this past year, up 90 students. And this summer, our girls, I call them our girls, our two ESL teachers have just been working without pay on their own to help get these new families acclimated to Russell County, get them connected to physicians and vaccinations and just anything, you know, housing.
They, one of them was calling families for me the other day, and another one was at Russell Springs yesterday.
So they're, you know, whether it's in person or on the phone, there's a lot of time they spend on the phone with these families, because if they come here and they don't know how to communicate, I mean, they've got to have someone to interpret for them. So they, they spend a lot of time outside of their regular duty of pay, helping and assisting these families. And I wanted to request an amendment to their job description for several years. Of course, went through, you know, the year of being sick and then trying to recover from that, and the next year, it just kept putting that off until it just really can't be put off any longer. But they do, I am requesting that we do amend their job description today to include 15 extended days for those two ladies. I can assure you, they use more than that, but I met with them and they were tickled with anything.
They're so appreciative, yes.
Just compensated for their time, and they're just deserving of that. So I hope you will consider that today and know that it will be put to good use. And it's, you know, weekend time, it's just, it's just all the time, but they're just there, there for these people to try to make the transition easier for them.
I know at the back of the school bash, there were numerous spending.
And, and Ms. Merron was right there with them, you know.
Yes, she was. Yes. And of course, I had a meeting with, with the ladies last week, and one of them had to leave the meeting. When she left the meeting, she said, "I have to go enroll two new students." So, you know, it's already started, and it's just going to continue. But, you know, there'll come a time when someone will probably be asking you for another ESL teacher.
Well, I'd say it never stops.
So, you know, that will be on the horizon in the future as well, too. And it's definitely needed.
Right.
Right now, they, they work as hard as they possibly can.
They do. I will echo what Ms. Retro said, and she, she does well with her team of that, and is a big advocate. And they're just so accessible to the families, and they just, our, our faculty and staff have such a dependence upon them as well, and they're so complimentary of them, of their work that they do. And while we're, while we're talking complimentary, Ms. Retro is retiring, and I think it would be a great time to give her a round of applause and thank her for her many years of service, Ms. Tanya. We go way back and teachers together at James Elementary School, and appreciate you, appreciate your advocacy for the, for the students and all the work that you've done for Russell County Schools.
I appreciate you saying that. Yeah, I'm really emotional if I talk about it. I was trying to talk about it, I've got much, but I have two weeks, so this weekend, next week. But my first four years were in Cumberland County. That was a time when we got out of college, when I got out of college in the mid-'90s, there were 50, 60 people trying to get one job here in the county. So I started my career, I spent four years in Cumberland County, and that was a great experience, and I met lifelong friends there. But when I had an opportunity to get back home, I did. So the rest of my career has been here in Russell County and done various things, taught fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, been an instructional coach.
Did a lot of independent consulting.
Yes.
Yeah, you did that, yeah.
Yes.
Because she was the riding guru.
Yes, I did riding across, did a lot of consulting across the state with riding, and then just an instructional coach, I think, for four or five years. I lost track of that, and then of course, moved into this role after that. So beginning my 31st year, of course, not going to be here long, but am beginning my 31st year, but, you know, that's a lifetime of work. It's hard to walk away from it, but it's, my family needs me.
It does become our identity.
It does.
It does, yes.
It does, you're tied to what you do, and if you've done that for so long, it's, it's important to you. It'll always be important to me, so.
It tests a lot of lives.
Yep. Well, we thank you, Ms. Tanya, we appreciate you.
Appreciate the acknowledgement.
Okay, we've not done this.
Not yet.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joy.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bethel?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is fundraiser approvals.
So Russell County High School fundraiser approval, this for the volleyball, sponsor banner, car wash, taco salad luncheon, the Servathon, and blanket sales. So I recommend approval of the school-wide fundraisers as presented.
They're almost all gone.
Yeah, they're retroactive.
Need a vote, motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Murray? Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bethel?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is revision, policy 09.123, absences and excuses, second reading.
Okay, this is the second reading, as Mr. Kazook just noted, of the policy 09.123 regarding absences and excuses. And again, it just solidifies really what we were doing already, that when students miss school, even when it's an unexcused absence, that certainly we will allow them to make up their, their work. to make up their, their work. And so, before, it kind of left some things up in the air, kind of like principal discretion, but it just solidifies our practice right now. So I recommend approval of the revisions to Policy 09 dot 123, absences and excuses as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You make a motion. Second?
I'll say.
Joy. Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Review of Procedure 09 dot 4341, AP 21, Alternative Education Notification.
So this is just the procedure for Alternative Education Notification. It does, procedures do not require the school board approval, just for review, and just highlights all the demographic data, and then the letter, and then the notes that the, the school official signs off on it, and it's just what we do for notification for students in placement in alternative school. So there's no requirement for that, no.
Okay. Next item is Data Security.
You have in your packet, it's basically the formality every year we have to go through for the school district data security and breach procedures. It's basically stating what we do if a teacher's email got hacked, a student, for that's as far as that goes, just the procedures that are in place, that KDE handed down to us, the things that we've got to do, report, just the steps of events we have to take. Some steps we've already, we've put in, we've got the two-step MFA or the multi-factor authentication, which on email, if you open it up in a weird place, you get a second step, you're able to text or phone call or an app that pops up asking for a second verification. That way, if somebody does have your password, they still have to have that second step before they get in, so that's a bit.
That's a great, it's a little bit of a hassle sometimes, but it's a great feature. Same thing with Infinite Campus, that does that as well now.
We've not had any kickbacks really, so it's all good, so.
There's no way that someone, unless they had access to the email as well, but like if I'm trying to get in their stu-
Or the phone.
Or the phone, yeah. Trying to get in the student information system, and I was a bad guy, and I was going to change the student's grades or whatever, on my email, I would get a code, and then I'd get an alert that unrecognized device, you know, was trying to log into that. Those types of things are very prevalent, school districts are not immune to them by any stretch of the imagination. I got one this morning, I know it was a hoax, it appeared as if it was trying to come from another school district for us to pay a bill, but it wasn't. Marla wouldn't let me pay it anyway.
We put banners on emails, too.
She would have stopped it.
I was just saying, where's your requisition?
There you go. I'm sorry, Mr. Bell.
No, I'm just saying, we had also put banners in our email.
Yes.
That way, if somebody's pretending to be Mr. Ford, with that banner up there that says, "This originated from outside of Russell County's district," that should alarm me that it's not from Mr. Ford, so.
Y'all know those, y'all seen those before, it's, yeah, so, and that happens too. Those hoax emails goes around, even from, you know, someone trying to impersonate me, I don't know why they want to do that, Ms. Brenda. I don't know what they get out of that, but those things happen. And that's the one pretty popular with purchasing gift cards. "I need a favor, I need you to purchase gift cards." And then if you respond to that, they want you to go buy them and then send pictures of the pen and the code. Yes.
Yeah, I've seen that. And we have had one or two, the Payroll Change email, they've been around, but of course, they've got a community person in there for all that, so.
So some things are a hassle, but you can't send an email to Ms. Deb or them and say, "Hey, I want to change my bank account and stuff," because it's too easy to, you know, to mess that up. Would you say, I mean, it's definitely more common, you all have to deal with those things than what it was just a few years ago, isn't it, Mr. Bell? Yeah.
Of course, all the phishing emails, I mean, we talked about, it's crazy.
Yeah, it is. Anything else, Mr. Bell?
Nope, unless they ask a question.
Next, next item is Personnel Reports.
Said I'd have to take a second breath to go through all this. Michaela Myers, James Elementary School, hired P5 teacher. Emily Nisley, hired James Elementary School, P5 teacher. Ellen Renee Daffren, James Elementary School MSD Instructional Assistant. Haley Russell, James Elementary School MSD Instructional Assistant. Kristy Taylor, James Elementary School, she's retiring. Danica Hadley, James Elementary School, resigning as kindergarten teacher. Stephanie Coffey, hired as the Assistant Principal at Russell Springs Elementary School. Emily Lindsay, hired at Salem Elementary School as the MSD Instructional Assistant. Josh Root, Salem Elementary School Instructional Assistant. Cameron Coffey, Salem Elementary School Instructional Assistant. Whitney Ellis, Russell County Middle School, science teacher. Megan Back, Russell County Middle School, science teacher. Joshua Bunch, Russell County Middle School, MSD Instructional Assistant. Lincoln Powell, Russell County Middle School, resigned, special education teacher. Mr. Powell had accepted the job, and then some things came up and he, he resigned the position, so that's why we went ahead and put it on there as resign. He never has worked the first day.
He didn't say resign, he's hired. Oh, you know, Lincoln Powell?
No, Lincoln Powell, yeah.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Matthew Latrell, Russell County High School, hired a science teacher. Jocelyn, Mrs. Tanya can pronounce that a lot better than I can, Valaquez Manriquez, Russell County High School, hired MSD Instructional Assistant. Shannon Mastin, Russell County High School, hired math teacher. Laurie Sap, Russell County High School, math teacher. Emily Hamilton, Russell County High School Interim Head Volleyball Coach. Sarah Roy, Russell County High School Interim Assistant Coach for Volleyball. Eric Larson, Russell County High School, Russell County Bus Garage Standby, a full-time bus driver. James Sturgill, Russell County Bus Garage Substitute to Standby Bus Driver. Josh Keeling from, on the Bus Garage Standby, a full-time bus driver. Don Willham from Substitute to Standby. Mr. Gene Collins is retiring as a bus driver. Kestee Gibson, hired District Speech Therapist. Jamie Shear, District Director of Federal Programs. David Scotty Weston is hired as a District Substitute Teacher. He's going to be doing the EMT class at the high school. And Daniel Tate, hired as a District Substitute Teacher. And Sarah Pointer, resigning as a speech therapist. And actually, Mrs. Dameron was doing the interview for the last certified position that we had open, was at the alternative school. She's doing that interview this morning. So we just about have all of our positions filled. There's some coaching positions that aren't in season yet. Besides that, I think we'll have everything, everything filled. And Ms. McFaul, to put you on the spot for just a minute, just, huh? Do you love that? Well, just talk just briefly about the Teacher Induction Cadre Friday, the first meeting of that, they were very positive and just a very good day.
Yes, it's a great day. This is our fourth year that we have had the Teacher Induction Cadre in association with Western Kentucky University and an instructor there, Dr. Rebecca Snowhall. She is just phenomenal. I mean, we are having, we've kind of changed it up the way it looks like for the last four years, but she's coming back again in January after Christmas, when, you know, you kind of have some experience as a new teacher, so it's just a good extra stamp to kind of get you the rest of the year. But she comes in and she talks about all those important things, just like what we were talking about with this letters, professional learning. You go to college, you do your student teaching, you learn some things, but when you get in the classroom and you're there and you're responsible and all these other things are going on that you didn't really think about, it's a little overwhelming, it's a little scary. So what she does is she talks to these brand-new teachers just more specifically about classroom management, which is huge.
That's great.
I don't care if it's kindergarten, if it's sixth grade, or if it's a senior in high school, but good classroom management procedures that you need to have in place day one, and then if that doesn't work, okay, question back in the plan. And I mean, those teachers, you can just see like stress going off their faces. I mean, they were so excited about the day. She shares strategies that they can take back and use in their classroom Wednesday of this week. I mean, she models, we do it, so, you know, when you do it, you learn better, you know exactly what to do. But it's classroom management, it's also about the framework, which is what they're evaluated on, because we want these teachers to do well, we want to keep them, we want them to stay with our district, and we want to support them in any way that we can. So they get a mentor teacher as well, and they have these little take-action items that they go through, and she talked about that, what does this look like? Why are we doing this? You're going to go into your mentor teacher's classroom, because we all know observing good practices, we can learn from it, we can take them back to our own classroom. She also talks about interventions, behavior-wise and academic-wise. Again, you know, these teachers have these great lesson plans, they think, "Why did you not get it? I did a great job." But, you know, it's the, what do I do next academically and behaviorally? She talks about assessments wise, it's so important to fortuitously assess your kids so that you know if they got it or not. I mean, it's just those good foundational skills that teachers need to be successful. And I mean, you know, a teacher, she's got such a great personality, I mean, so many of those new folks said, "Man, I feel like I've known her all my life." I mean, she's just got that kind of, you know, personality that you don't feel crazy in asking a question. And as we were going through activities, you know, she would say, "Okay, this is great, but then what if this happens?" So she gave them these real-life scenarios, again, that they can take back and be prepared for starting school. So again, we, we had a six-hour in-person day on Friday, we've got the mentor that's going to be working with these teachers throughout the year, as well as our instructional coaches, and then we're going to have one last meeting in January to kind of give them a little boost, and it was so good to see people last year come back in that were still a little kind of timid and, you know, afraid to ask questions, but then they have all these real-life experiences, they were like, "Okay, let me just see what's going on in my room, help me with this." And then they build back camaraderie with everybody else in the district, too, so they feel like they're not the only ones. So it's a, it's a great opportunity, and also, it's kind of like letters, just by going through this process and doing these items with their mentor, they can receive three hours of free college credit from Western Kentucky University. So that was how we ended our day, we were all applying for graduate school at Western Kentucky University. So at the end of this year, when they complete all those items, free, free three hours of credit. So they were very excited about that. And we talked to them, yes, and we're like, "I don't really know if I need that or not." You never know. You're young in your career, it's free.
Yep, take it.
Sit your back in your pocket, because you never know when you might need it. So they were very excited.
And a mixture of teachers, some that are traditionally certified, some that are in an Option 6 program, and some that are just starting to be, but we've got some, we're really, really happy, we've got some really good, strong hires, just a great group of teachers that we're really excited with, which is going to be a good school year, yeah.
At the end of the day, she said, "You all have looked out," she said, "You have a fantastic group of new folks." But she does this with many districts across the state, so she was very complimentary.
She's kind of part of us now, isn't she?
She's one of us now.
Yeah.
So they don't have like a teacher in pla, in the building?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, they have a mentor teacher that is assigned to them, and so they're going to work through these things, and they're there, you know, as their go-to if they have questions. But then too, I feel like that they are starting to reach out to each other as well, because they see that they're not in that boat a long time.
Yep, yep, every teacher has a, has a mentor teacher. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, next item is Public Comments.
I do want to thank our business and industry again, that allowed us to, Stevens Pipe and Steel and Dr. Snyder's, now known as Mothersen and Bruce and Superior Battery, we had a great day of learning, great day of connections. It was just a really, really good day, so I appreciate those folks letting us tour their industry and made some good connections, and just to listen to those talk and see what really happens inside those buildings. I think that everybody agreed it was a, is a very good day. Also, want to thank all of our administrators, our faculty, staff, just everybody. Wednesday doesn't happen by accident, the first day of school doesn't happen by accident, it happens because, I always say, after December, we're living in two school years. We're finishing up one year and getting ready for the next one, and that next one starts on Wednesday. And, you know, classes or classrooms are ready, and that's because teachers work really hard, the floors are waxed, that's because custodians work really hard. Food will be served, that's because our school nutrition staff work really hard, and the kids will be at school, that's because our buses drivers work really hard and get them there, and our food service worked and served all those kids and stuff this summer. Our administrators work in preparation for that, and it's just everybody coming together, so parents get them there and everything. So again, we were blessed in a great community, with a lot of support, and I just want to publicly thank everybody just for the, for what is going to be a great school year.
Matt?
Yes, sir.